It's 1:02 PM and I call this meeting of the Washington State Parks and Recreation Commission Work Session to order. We will start with a roll call of our commissioners, beginning with our Executive Committee.
Ken Bounds from Seattle currently in Sicily.
Lori Conroy from Spokane.
And we can just continue in, I'm gonna just say alphabetical order by last name. Hopefully, we know that by now, so.
Well, I think that's me. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Mark Brown from Lacey. But this morning, or this afternoon, rather, I'm in Utah.
Hi, Ali Rad from Olympia, Washington.
Good afternoon, Mike Latimer.
Holly Williams from Vancouver, Washington.
And I think that's everybody. And this is Sophia Danenberg.
Did Mike Latimer introduce himself?
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't hear that.
Um, so this is Sophia Danenberg from Withbee Island. I am currently in Paris and I did, my meeting is ongoing, so I had to step out of my meeting, unfortunately, which is where there is good Wi-Fi because it is, otherwise it would have been pretty disruptive. And unfortunately, I'm now in a place where I've got like two bars. So I'm gonna hopefully be able to keep this on, but if I drop, it could be because my Wi-Fi went. So with that, Commissioner Dupree, if you could please introduce the staff that's present. Commissioners, so we keep, we keep downgrading you to Commissioner. I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Danenberg. I'm joining you from beautiful Wenatchee, Washington today. It's nice to see that everybody from all over the place. With us today, we have Deputy Director Mike Sternback, our Administrative Services Director Laura Holmes, Operations Director John Crimmins, Stewardship Director Lisa Lance, Parks Development Director Heather Saunders, our Legislative Director Owen Rowe, Human Resources Director Amber Erdal, Tribal Relations Director Jenna Bowman, Communications Director Claire DeLong, and our Executive Assistant, Becky Ellison. Also joining us from parts unknown is our Assistant Attorney General Andy Wu.
Thank you.
I know he has a sweater on.
From parts unknown as well. So I am, it is really fantastic that this virtual format is working out and allowing us to host this meeting without a lot of absences. With that, I'd like to start with our Indigenous Lang Acknowledgement. We respect and affirm tribal sovereignty and honor Indigenous peoples whose traditional lands we occupy. The State Parks and Recreation Commission is committed to working with all tribes to preserve and restore a healthy natural environment for future generations. I usually like to add some, because I'm often traveling, I usually try, like to add some color commentary from wherever I am. But I do think it's important for us and as the Washington State Parks Commission to acknowledge the Indigenous people in the lands where our parks are located. I am here in France and I had to look this up. And there is in fact, the UN, I am here at a UN meeting. And so if you actually were to look at the UN Refugee Agency, they have what's called a World Directory of Minorities and Indigenous Peoples. And you can look up different countries and different places. And there, you know, you can see, you know, here it's saying that the Bretons are Celts who live in Northwest France, in the present administrative region of Brittany, and that this is where the, some of the, of where the ancestors of the current French people are from, or the people in this area. But it is an interesting resource. It does have a website, which I had to copy and paste onto a notepad in order to just be able to read it smoothly. But it is the UN Refugee Agency. And if you look at Directory of Minority and Indigenous Peoples, I think you'll, you'll find it. So with that, let's see, any changes to the agenda? And if not, any logistics we should be aware of, other than sort of knowing, as we did earlier, that there might be something popping up if people join about your video. We're all getting that, you're fine. Anything else that we should note? Becky, Mahar?
Yeah. So just noting that we're holding this meeting via Teams. We are also offering a meeting space at headquarters for the public to attend, which is to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act. And that's it.
Okay. And I am trying to put myself on and off mute, but I might stop doing that. I'll just say it's extremely loud where I am, because I hate just, there's no air conditioning in this room. And so I have to have the window open because it's 80 degrees, even though it's 10:00 PM. So, but with that, so apologies if you get background noise. So if there are no other logistics, I think we can move on to our financial update from Administrative Services Director Laura Holmes.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Danenberg. I also do see Commissioner Rod, you have your hand raised. I just want to make sure if there's any comments or questions you have before I get started.
I have a question because the, do we have to approve the minutes of last meeting? Are this official meeting?
No. So that's at the next meeting, at our commission meeting in July.
Okay. There was an action item we discussed in the last meeting about electrification of the fleet. And I didn't see it on agenda for any update. Is this, is this gonna be at the next July meeting? Do I see it? Yes?
Yes, Commissioner Rod, that will be at the next meeting in July.
Okay. That's all, that's all that I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. And apologies if I start to mishand somebody, please let me know. I'm also working with one screen. And so I'm sort of going back and forth between the agenda, which I'm trying to read and follow. And so I have to kind of have it cover my screen, which means I won't see you. So thank you for noting that. And everyone else, feel free if you see that I miss a hand. All right. So if you'd like to continue?
Sounds great. I will get my presentation mode on. So, good afternoon, Commissioners. Laura Holmes, Administrative Services Director. Today's financial update is through April 2023, which is 92% of the way through our current biennial cycle. It will include both our capital and operating budgets. We'll take a look at revenue that has been collected to the Parks Renewal and Stewardship Account and how that compares to projections. And we'll also look at the summary of the 2023-25 enacted budgets. Today, I do not have updated visitation data, but we'll have that for you at our July meeting. So starting off with our capital budget, we have 163.7 million in funded projects, 71.8 million in our new projects in our capital construction account, which we have spent 35% of these funds. We have 38.1 million for projects that were started prior to this biennium and re-appropriated. And we have spent 59% of these funds. Additionally, we have 53.8 million in grants donations and pass-through funds, largely our RCO-funded grants. And this, we have spent 43% of these funds. In looking at the total of the 163.7 million across the board, we have spent 43%. Our capital project spending rate in fiscal year two, as compared to fiscal year one, has increased about 50%. That is very normal for the second biennium, as projects pick up speed that were funded and the increased rate. So we are expecting an estimated reappropriation rate of about 60 million that will carry into next biennium. Looking at the first two columns there, which is our, our state construction account, we have nearly 110 million in funded projects. That represents 101 projects currently. So to dive a little bit deeper into those, we have completed 21 projects, two are new and 19 were re-appropriated. In construction, we have 26 projects, 15 of those are new and 11 re-appropriated. The balance remaining there to spend is 23.5 million. In design and permitting, we have 42 projects, 28 are new and 14 re-appropriated, with a little over 33 million left there. And for our planned projects, which are on hold, not started or deferred, we have 12 projects, nine new, three re-appropriated, with a little over, well, about five and a half million balance on those projects. Moving into our operating budget, we have 231.8 million in spending authority, 62.8 million of this is in our general fund, and we've spent 88%. 142.3 million is our Parks Renewal and Stewardship Account. We've spent 87%. And then dedicated in other funds, which is mostly boating and winter wreck, we have 26.7 million and have spent 66%. In looking at the agency's general fund and PRSA combined, that is 205.1 million. So we've spent 88% of our available expenditure authority there. And how are we spending to operate our parks? 68% of our funds are going there, 16% to administer and provide agency support, 9% parks development and stewardship, 6% for boating and winter wreck, and we currently have 1% in suspense. And what are these costs on? 59% is our staff salaries and benefits, and 41% are for all non-staff costs. Looking at our PRSA revenue, we have collected 122.8 million. 37% was in Discover Pass sales, 32% camping, 6% roofed overnight, 11% license renewal donations, and 14% all other. In previous presentations, the Discover Pass and camping have been a little more neck and neck, around 35% each contributing. Our camping has gone down slightly, and our Discover Pass has gone up a little bit in the last few months. So it made a little bit of a difference there. And I guess we'll see how that evens out probably again over the summertime. We have collected 12 million over what we were projecting to collect. This was in Discover Pass, 11%, 7% in our camping, 34% more in our roofed overnight, 1% in our license renewal donations, and 22% in all other revenue sources. Then looking at our trends, with the information, the data from July through April, so looking at our fiscal year-to-date, fiscal year 21 was a spike. So we saw a huge increase there in revenue. The Discover Pass went down slightly, but it's held fairly strong there year-to-date. Camping, we have, even though it's been down just slightly, it is really holding true to our previous two years. Roofed, the same, down just slightly currently, and DOL donations, also down just 5%. So in summary, for the financial overview, our project spending rate has increased in our fiscal year two. And we do project to have about a 60 million reappropriation rate there. Our operating expenditures are on track, and revenue is coming in higher than we projected. Moving into summary of the enacted budgets, we did request a fiscal year 23 supplemental decision package. We received 2 million, 10,000. This is the final change to our current biennial funds that are available. So our expenditure authority in our, in my next report, will be bumped up from the 231.8 million to the 233.8 million. That information is being, that allotments are being added to the reports this month, and will be reflected in our next reporting. The 23-25 biennial operating budget, so our, while we have 231.8 million, our base budget or carry forwards, excluding all one time for this biennium, is 222.6 million. So moving into 23-25, we will have 257.8 million, or a little over 35 million in new money. And we are still working to, we, we won't find out the compensation amount until the end of June. So we won't know for sure what our base amount is, about 257, until we have the total from the compensation. But we're estimating right now about 248 million would be our carry forward moving into our new base in 23-25. And for the enacted capital budget, we have 71.3 million in our building construction account in new projects. We have 2.4 million that we received in the climate-related accounts, and 24.9 million in grants. And I know that I have provided the details on this in emails and the information, but wanted to just highlight that 24 million there is for our Niskwali Park, and that this is a full-service park that the funding received does complete the majority of the work to complete this park. And the only portion that will be asked for next biennium is the campground phase. Also, RCO was funded at 120 million for their WWRP. And we have received 17 million in funding for those projects, which is going to help with some projects in the park, as well as our long-distance trail system. And lastly, the way that we received the capital preservation pool has allowed some increased flexibility in our managing our projects to accomplish the construction projects that we need to complete. And that concludes today's presentation. So questions, Commissioner Willie, or I'm sorry. It's too easy when it's virtual. Sorry, Commissioner Danenberg.
Should I ask my question?
I have a question.
Sophia, should I ask my question?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Actually, Laura, I was just, the very last point you made, so we receive some increased flexibility in how we spend our capital budget. Could you just expand on that a little bit?
Yes, for sure. So we received, rather than line-by-line project items for our capital preservation pool, we received a lump sum that designated some projects, but left us flexibility with the remaining balance, so that we could prioritize projects as well as switch out ones that we weren't quite ready for. And yeah, made it much more flexible.
That's really great.
Question.
Okay, Commissioner Rod.
Yeah. Well, do we have any vacancy in the staffing for the project under construction, the design project, all these capital projects? Do we have any vacancies in the staffing level?
I am not sure that I'm probably the best person to answer that. I don't know if Heather would be available and able to answer that particular question, if there are vacancies. Thank you, Heather.
Yeah, I've been reporting on their vacancies in the capital program, probably the, the last three commission meetings. Our greatest number of vacancies are in the Eastern Program, which has a large majority of the capital projects. So we were 60 to, I think we were only 60% staffed there for quite some time. We just hired two people, and we're currently conducting interviews for a third person. So we went from 60 to 80, and we're trying to get that number back up.
So since our last commission meeting, we said, we wanna look at in different ways to speed up the process and explore options to enhance, so we can spend the money into re-appropriating every year. So what you guys have done or plan on doing to, to, to speed up the process?
So, well, it's a great question, and it's a question that I, that I have, that I share. So one of the things that we're doing is working really hard on our vacancies. I actually, I would have saved this for my staff update, but we're also hiring a Deputy Director for Parks Development that will be over, helping lead some of this large effort around developing a facilities program for Washington State Parks and things of that nature. At the last commission meeting, Kyle provided the capital, you know, update and shared some statistics on how many contracts. You know, one of the things that you've brought up before, which I appreciate is, you know, are we outsourcing? Are we using contractors and consultants as much as we can? So we're looking at that, too. We also got four, at least four new positions through our operating budget request, that will help develop a scoping team. So some of the, some of the challenges that we have in capital is that we have been requesting appropriations, but we haven't had the staff or the operating funds to go out and do all the feasibility studies that are necessary to actually be able to properly estimate our construction costs and timelines. So the legislature came back and has funded operating staff that can do that, so that we'll have more shovel-ready projects and like better estimates. So we're kind of using a multi, multi, multiple sources of influence to try to address the, the delivery project, the delivery challenges. And then one other thing that we're working on is I've asked all the regions to develop a staffing plan for how they, what, what they need, what capacity they need, what resources they need to deliver on this, on this highest capital budget that we've ever gotten. So we're looking at staffing, consultants, resources, you know, multiple things.
That, that's wonderful. So do we think we can get update in our next non, not Zooming meeting, not virtual meeting, have, okay, we did one, two, three, and we expect that the ratio gonna be this much for next year? So we know what the expectations are, since you are guys doing a multi-approach to solve this issue?
Yeah, we can, yes, we can. We can do that.
Wonderful. I have one last question. That $2.4 million for climate, can somebody elaborate on that? Where the money gonna go?
It was, I believe, a salmon restoration project, and I can't remember the other project. Do you have that? I don't have the list handy.
It cannot be all for the salmon.
No, there were two, there were two projects, but I don't remember what the other one is off my, off the top of my head.
No problem.
I can, I can find it.
No, no problem. Just wanna, I wonder, is 2.4 million, that big a chunk of change? Great. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm done. Thanks.
Commissioner Brown, Bounce, sorry, I think Commissioner Bounce was next.
Thank you, Commissioner. Couple of questions. One, Laura, on camping, since we're kind of, where we were estimating about the same level of camping as we've seen in the past, my question is, compared to what, is there a, this may be for Mike or John, do we have a good sense of what we think the realistic capacity is, and what we think the realistic use would be if we were at something called full capacity, recognizing that at the end of winter, we're not gonna be expecting to have every campsite used. But we must, we probably have some sense of, in the general sense of how much, some way of measuring whether at some point, we're kind of saturated to the point where the expectation of more camping is illusionary?
And so is your question around like data to compare sort of where we're at as far as capacity in the wintertime? I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow.
No, it's, it's, you know, we're, we're even where we've been last year. We know we could look historically where we've been. I don't know what our, you know, if we were at something we would consider full capacity, which obviously isn't on every campsite used every day, what would that look like? So we get some sense of comparing, you know, where we are with where we think we could be, given the resource, the assets we have. Does that make any sense?
Absolutely. No, that, that makes total sense. I follow that. And I don't know, Mike or John, if you have a sense of that. You know, I know we are looking at our campsites, our staffing levels are different during the winter, so we don't have as much open as well. And so I think that does make a difference in what, comparing what we, you know, would like to see as full resource. And I see Director Dupree, your hand went up. I'm not sure if it's for this, or if you have a question for later. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Bounce, for the question. And I don't know if this gets to what you're asking as well, but what we have seen over the course of the pandemic, which is still holding true, is our shoulder seasons are disappearing. We have, just colloquially from talking to, to staff, we know that we're seeing much more use in like March and April, as opposed to just seeing the majority of use coming in, in like late April or, or May. And then definitely the last couple of years through solid through September and October, not just in, during the weekends, but during the week as well. I just, I've been on some park visits this week, and I was just told that Thursday is the new Friday. We have a few parks that have, that have significant Wi-Fi put into them. And so what we're seeing is people staying longer because they're able to work from the parks, and they're coming in days earlier. We also have data from our Canvas Reservation System that we're just starting to put together to look at what does full capacity mean? And when we say a park is full, are we actually reaching 100% of our campsites? And when is that 100% occurring? Where is it occurring? And so we have somebody that's working on the data of that, so we can kind of judge what does it mean to be at full capacity and where we're, where we're seeing the, the significant amount of use. And then actually take the anecdotal evidence that we're getting and compare it to the statistics we have from our reservation system. Knowing that the reservation system, especially in the shoulder seasons, doesn't capture everything, because we do have more of a first-come, first-served sort of environment in those, in those months. But so we're, but we can pull the data, it just, it's a little harder when it's not in the reservation system.
True. Yeah, I'm just thinking in terms of five or 10 years from now, if camping can't grow because of capacity, we still have population growth, we still potentially have Discover Pass growth, but it's a third of our revenue, and it seems like that could create some, some financial concern for PRSA, yes, or a...
Yeah. And that's one of the things that we're thinking about, you know, we, our business development, how we're handling business development, and how we're defining that within the agency is sort of going through this Renaissance right now of looking at more of our, just that capacity and where our revenue is going. How are we gonna maximize our revenue? Are we, have we max, you know, what does the, the next few years of the Discover Pass look like? Because there are some caveats there of, if our, our revenue gets to a certain point, then we divide it equally between all three agencies. And so, so looking at a long-term strategy to, to make good decisions based on, on how we're, you know, our use of PRSA and our reliance on PRSA. I know that seems, that's a little nebulous, but we are, we are starting to collect that data so that we have it for comparison purposes.
Great. The other question I have, this is really kind of for Lauren and Heather, is whether, you know, starting with the new biennium, if there is a way, Heather, for you to estimate or project what you would expect the expenditure curve to look like over the next two years, as a way to measure by having some metric that could show whether we're approaching that level of projection based on the resources you have and the projects you know about, or not, or we get, or we're flat, but we, so, you know, just some way of, of being able to measure over the next two years, other than just, you know, how much money we spent, you know, how we're doing. Does that make any sense?
It makes perfect sense to me. I, I mean, I think we, I think we need some benchmarks, and we need a trajectory, you know. So one thing that we've been talking about with the capital team is what are, what are, what are the work plans? What are we expecting to deliver? Where we have barriers? What are we doing to address those barriers, rather than just identifying the barriers? You know, what, how are we making movement on those things? I think we probably would do well to have kind of a, an estimate or a goal for reducing the reappropriation amount, or having, having a goal for what we want the reappropriation to be and what's appropriate. And so right now, I've got staff working on, with this staff, what can you deliver, on what timeline, you know, what's, what's, and I think, just, and it's just a caveat, I think that that's necessary and something You know, what's, what's, and I think just, and it's just a caveat, I think that that's necessary and something we should be doing. I think it's gonna take a little while to ramp up. It takes quite a, you know, we're gonna be probably bringing on additional staff to help deliver this bigger budget. And it's gonna take some time to, to get staffed up and then to get those people operating. But right now I've got Kyle and Azim, who's our facilities program manager, you know, working on estimates for what we can produce with the resources we have so that we can give you a better forecast. And then to your point, we can say, you know, we're meeting that, we're exceeding that, hopefully exceeding that. Um, and if we're not, why we're not, um, and what we're going to do about it to change it. So.
Right, right. Thank you.
Okay, now Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Um, this is a good, uh, I think, uh, follow-up on Commissioner Rod's question. I also wanted to ask you, uh, Laura, if you could give us a little more detail on these climate, uh, items. There's 1.43 in the operating budget for climate, and I'm looking actually at, at the staff report, not the PowerPoint, but 1.43 in operating. Then there was 2 million in the transportation budget that also has a climate, uh, tag on it. And I, and I think on the Capitol, you've already responded. If I remember correctly from our work on the Hill and our legislative committee meeting, I think part of that Capitol appropriation was for a climate-related project at Fort Warden. But I, I may be wrong about that, but I, I think that's what that is. But the climate pieces and operating and transportation, what are those specifically going to be used for?
Sure. No, that's a great, great, uh, question. And I did look it up and you were correct. So it's the fish barrier is 1.4 million and the Fort Warden PDA geothermal heating is the other million. So that's the 2.4. Um, and then I, I see, um, Lisa is on the screen. Uh, so, uh, I will, if you're good, Lisa, I will hand this over to you to answer the 1.4 million and then I can, uh, do the 2 billion or you can also, I know we both are involved in that.
Um, so the, the language in the bill actually is to, um, use that 1.4 million to identify and reduce, um, carbon emissions and to assess areas that are vulnerable to climate change. Um, our plans for that money would be to do some additional assessments. Um, we would be bringing on an additional position right now. Um, you saw Ryan Carlson, um, previously, um, talk about our climate program and he will be, we will be hiring a second, um, position that will be focused specifically on reducing our carbon emissions. Um, and so, so that we are able to focus on that more directly, um, as an agency.
And the one, uh, the 2 million in transportation?
So the 2 million in the transportation budget is, uh, to help us, uh, make progress in the electrification of our fleet. So it is a list specific to, um, uh, our vehicles and our lawn care equipment and other equipment to help, um, make some progress there.
And then finally, uh, the 1.2 million in the staff report you've got detailed out of the motor vehicle account. Is that something to, what is that money for?
That is a, a carry forward level. We've had that money, uh, for several years now. And that is road money that allows us to repair roads in our parks. So it's just a small designated piece and it's used by both our capital program when they're doing projects and they have road repair and by our deferred, uh, maintenance in our operate, operating, um, operations division. And they, uh, will repair roads when they're doing work there as well.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, I don't see any more hands. So it's, are no more questions? Um, I don't see anymore. Okay, then, um, we will move to our next agenda item. Thank you so much, Laura.
Thank you.
I have some comments, but I, I've got, not super, they're not so timely. Um, so, uh, Carrie Murphy from our visitor services manager and Ariel Ryan, please let me know if I pronounced your last name incorrectly. Our customer service manager will be presenting about our foster family program.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm just gonna get into presenting mode. It's loading. Everybody see that? Great. Well, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, my name is Carrie Murphy. I am, um, the Washington State Parks Visitor Services Manager. Uh, with me today, I have Ariel Ryan, uh, our customer service manager in the Information Center and Discount Pass Program. Uh, as you know, we have five discount passes and two permits. Today Ariel is going to provide you all an exciting update, um, on our foster family camping program. And before Ariel starts, I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm really proud of the work Ariel and the team in the Information Center has done to, uh, improve equity and access to this program. Um, ahead of WAC changes, we are hoping to request, um, at a future meeting. And with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it on over to Ariel.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here with everyone today. Um, so we'll start today by giving a quick overview of the program. Talk about who we currently serve, gaps in our service, and discuss program improvements that are aimed to increase access and invite more families into our parks. This program provides free day-use camping and Washington State, and Washington State residents who provide out-of-home care to minor children. Currently, family, only families who are licensed foster parents or caregivers through Department of Children, Youth and Families can participate in this program. This pro, program has proven to be a great vehicle for youth engagement and getting families from all backgrounds into the parks. We're very proud of this program. As we discussed in the previous slide, we are able to provide this program to foster parents and caregivers who go through the formal process. Currently, we are seeing about 10% of eligible families participate annually. According to the Kinship Care Report prepared by Department of Children, Youth and Families, 47% of all children in foster care are placed with kin, usually a grandparent, excluding them from our program. This report also shows that a large portion of these families are from tribal nations, underserved communities and/or a low income. The current language of the WAC requires family who wish to use this program to present either a foster home license or caregiver ID card, excluding informal kinship families who may go through other agencies and tribal families who coordinate their care through their nation. Over the past year, we have collaborated with Department of Children, Youth and Families, Department of Social and Health Services, as well as the Indian Child Welfare Subcommittee to better understand the various processes families go through to develop a more inclusive program. We're excited to announce that starting next month, we'll be accepting applications for and issuing the Washington State Parks Foster Family Pass. The ability to get an actual pass will create easier access for families and streamline the verification process for field staff. We recently attended the We Are Family Day with the Mariners. As you can see, here's a picture of myself and Vicente Lopez, one of our customer service specialists at the event. We spent the day talking with families about the foster family program. With our increased outreach efforts, we hope to see a bump in participation as the word spreads. The expansion of this program is a source of great personal pride for me. Watching the excited faces of families when they realize they now have access to this program is priceless. Our next step will be requesting the commission approves updating the language of the WAC. Our goal is to bring this request to the July meeting or another soon-to-be-held meeting after more internal work on the WAC is completed. And now I'd like to open it up to anyone who might have questions about the program.
Thank you. I don't see any hands up. Are there any questions? If not, I can ask, um, a first quick one while folks think of questions. Um, uh, what internal work, um, do you, do you think, is it just needs to be completed? And how does that work? And I can't quite remember what the timing is for WAC changes.
So we wanna make sure that we write the WAC correctly and, um, make sure that we're opening up the program to as many people as we can include. So that's gonna involve, um, checking everything with the AG's office. It's gonna include, um, going through, um, you know, obviously Owen's gonna be involved and Claire's gonna be involved in a lot of this. Um, but we just wanna take a lot of baby steps to make sure that we get it right. And Carrie, do you have anything you'd like to, to add to that or Claire?
Sorry, you think, no, I'll go. Um, I mean, we're, we're pretty close. We've done a lot of work over the past year. Uh, we're just going over everything with, um, theater chef, fine tuning the language of the update that we're, um, looking to request, um, as well as, um, just running everything by, um, you know, by the AG as well as our partners at, uh, the Department of Children, Youth and Families and, um, the Department of Social and Health Services. Claire, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you all did great. And yeah, I've come in at this, and hello, everyone, I'm, I'm Claire. Um, and I will, uh, I'm just really excited about the work the team's done. I think it's been, it's, it's really been in the spirit of the commission priorities of engaging youth and, um, creating more accessible parks. So, um, yeah, we're just kinda crossing our i's and dotting our t's on the WAC changes, but, uh, I think it really is a, a good move there. Thank you.
I second what Claire said. This is Owen. Um, uh, you're, you're Policy and Governmental Affairs Director. And Ariel, you did a phenomenal job presenting that. And thank you for your work on this. I think we're really close. You know, we're on track for July, but we just wanna make sure that we're doing everything correctly. We've got broad authority within the WAC, and so I'm feeling that we're, we're, we're doing everything that we can. We just wanna make sure from an implementation standpoint that we're, uh, dotting all of our i's and, and crossing our t's.
Commissioner Williams?
Um, I was just wondering if, um, our travel liaison Jenna Bowman had any additional comments as well?
No comments for me. Um, they've been reaching out. We've talked a lot about the different, um, options for families that are part of the system. So, you know, there's a lot of families that are appointed guardianship and don't go through DSHS. And so we had deep discussion and I appreciate being invited to the conversation.
Commissioner Rod? Uh, Commissioner Rod, did you have a question? I see your hand up.
Looks like he's muted.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, sorry. It is, uh, sorry. Yeah, it is a good program. I'm very supportive of it. And I, my, my question is that when we are writing the WAC, I, oh, do we have to limit it to a foster or foster, uh, families or, or guardian? Can we expand it to a needy family, how defined by the social and health services? Because this is the people who needs to have access to the parks. Uh, I'm, I don't, I'm not clear about that, but we don't wanna keep the, the very narrow definition. So only certain people kind of qualify. We have more, more than wide, wide category of people who are, who are, uh, need the money or, or considered on poverty level. I don't know that, on top of that.
Um, I thought Owen come on. Did you, or Ariel?
Yeah, I can, I can start. Um, so first, the, there is an RCW that, um, rules this pass and it does, it is specific to foster families. So we wouldn't necessarily be able to use the foster pass as the vehicle for this. Um, but it is something that, you know, we have identified as, as something we'd like to explore as far as our discount pass program goes. You know, it, definitely. Um, and then Carrie or Claire, if you have more to, to add?
Yeah, no, it's a great, I really appreciate that question a lot. As, as Ariel mentioned, it's something we're kind of looking at across the board with our discount pass programs. Um, I did see Diana's hand go up though, so before I go too far, I think you're passionate about this issue too. So I'm, I'm wondering if it was related.
It, it was related. Thank you, Claire. Um, yes, Commissioner Rod, this, this, the specificity, specificities of this one are focused on the foster family pass. But we have had, um, a fair amount of conversations. I know that, um, Owen and I have talked extensively about, uh, families, um, uh, from TANF, uh, programs and, uh, which is temporary aid for needy families and how we are reaching, um, uh, families who need the pass the most or, you know, um, from a, a different, uh, socioeconomic strata. So we don't have a mechanism for that right now. So it would be actually creating something from scratch, which is something that we can do. But there is a fair amount of work that is involved around that. Part of that is, is just the paperwork of loan, of how people are identified, um, by income is, is a, a challenge. But we do, in partnering, or potentially partnering with DSHS, have avenues that we can get that information. So it's just having, right now, having, making the time to look at how we would go about uh, pursuing different passes along that road. But it's something that we've already started, uh, having conversations about with staff.
May I add something there? Um, yeah, so, um, as part of that, probably, you know, I met with Owen, uh, a couple of weeks ago and Claire, um, on the subject of our discount pass program in general. And our, our plan is to, and obviously the, the income-driven option pass is one of the things still, um, up for, you know, consideration. Our current plan is to, um, you know, make a presentation, um, to our pair, our, you know, our pair team. Um, here in the next, I don't know, six months or so, um, of some of the things we would like to do and get feedback, um, just on the program as it exists and some of the thoughts that, uh, we have for the future.
I was gonna, there are no other, I don't see any more hands up. Um, you know, the one sort of comment that I had, it's, it's not really a question, but, um, you know, looking at this WAC, I know it's, it's, it's interesting to read because I feel like, you know, we, there are some, um, you know, issues and concerns that we've had with, um, some other discount-free pass programs. And it looks like this WAC actually, um, has, has some backstops for some of those issues. And I know that the issues that we've had with other pass programs aren't, you know, aren't, aren't in a WAC. And so we don't necessarily have the ability to change them. But this does seem to be a really, I mean, you know, looking at the, the WAC, it does seem to be a really well thought out in terms of the details, um, the different implications, really thinking of just the logistics of how it works. It seems like, um, it's well, it's well done. And so, um, I think it's really fantastic that we're able to expand this and it looks like a great program. Um, and so, are there any final questions? I see a thumbs up from Ken. Um, and by the way, I, I look really choppy to me. So let me know if my, if I'm, if my audio is also choppy. I, I've been turning off my camera to try to make the audio clearer when others are speaking. But when I'm looking at my own video, it looks really like, like I'm not coming through clearly. So let me know if there's an issue with mine, as well, as I said, I've got a really bad internet connection here.
Um, I could, I could hear you very well. It could be because I'm closer.
Okay, I know. You and I are very close to each other, oddly. Um, okay, if there's, um, if there are no other questions, um, we are really looking forward to seeing that, um, WAC change come to the commission. So thank you for all your work. And I think with this, we are moving on to our executive assistant, Becky Ellison, for the 2024 commission dates and locations.
Thank you. Let's see here. Okay, so we are talking about our proposed 2024 commission dates and locations. Uh, it is our goal, of course, to hold our commission meetings around the state. We want to, uh, that, there we go, better understand local needs, emerging issues. We wanna facilitate stakeholder interactions, enable outreach with local officials and provide a opportunity for the commission to tour the parks. Forward. Tours are planned on Tuesday, sometimes Fridays. We have our work sessions on Wednesday and our commission meetings on Thursdays. Uh, after meeting with the executive committee, we were proposing sticking with the same schedule that we have this year, which is our four quarterly in-person hybrid. which is our four quarterly in-person hybrid meetings, four virtual meetings, like the one we're having today, and our annual planning meeting. Our virtual meetings could be a commission meeting or a work session, which would enable us to take requested, requested actions as needed. We were looking at January, either the Tacoma or Olympia area to stay close during session and to enable our headquarters staff to be able to come to our meeting if they choose to. We'd have a March 6th virtual work session or commission meeting. In April, we talked about going to Yakima. We have not been there in several years. We could also do tribal outreach with the Yakima Nation. May 29th would be our virtual work session or commission meeting. In July, going to the Bellingham area and possibly meeting with the Lummy Tribal Community and meeting at their facility. August 21st would be virtual and then October 16, 17, heading over to Clarkston, which would give us an opportunity to see Fields Spring, which most commissioners now on the commission have not seen. November 13th, a virtual meeting. And then December 10th and 11th, a planning meeting in North Bend Snoqualmie area. After today, I hope we have a discussion about locations and dates. After then, I will reach out to various locations that we've discussed to see if there's acceptable capabilities within the government rate. And they have internet, so we can do our hybrid. And then I will be bringing it back for requested action in July. And that is it. Yeah, stop sharing so I can see everybody.
And I see Commissioner Williams with her hand up.
Um, I, so given that Field Springs is at nearly 4,000 feet, I would like to explore the possibility of moving that meeting up at least one week. I was looking Indigenous People's Day in 2024 is on the 14th of October. But, you know, I just was thinking, I kind of don't want to get skunked like we did at Chelan. I realized that that was in November, but is, would that be possible, I guess, to move it up a week?
We could. The dates right now are pretty set, spread out so that it gives staff time to turn over between meetings to do our work and to get our product done. I don't think adjusting a week would be harmful. So I could move up a week to try to get us better weather.
I mean, I'm open to other commissioners' thoughts on that. I was just sort of, I, I really, really want to see Field Springs. So it's, it's pretty like, I, I do hope to get to enjoy that place as well.
Yes.
I have to do a quick date check because I only checked the proposed date. Are we discussing moving it to what, October? Ninth, is that it?
It would be, no, it would be the week, the eighth, ninth, 10th, yeah, the ninth and 10th. Yeah.
Yeah. So work session would be the ninth. The commission meeting would be the 10th, which means we would tour on October 8th.
I'll just say that I'm, I'm going to have a, what appears to be a hot mess of a schedule next year. I, this particular negotiation that I'm at right now has two meetings next year that don't have specific dates. But I'm hopeful that there's not a conflict. One is April, May, which usually indicates it's going to be towards the end of April or beginning of May. So my hope is that that wouldn't conflict. And then there's an October, November, which summarily is my hope that it would be the end of October, beginning of November. And each of these are 10 days. And so they're not, they're going to be, and then require travel because I think, well, ones maybe in Korea, I mean, one's supposed to be in Canada, but I heard Russia is going to object to that. So that means it's going to be in Kenya and then the other ones in Korea. So quite a bit of travel on either end. And so I'm not jumping in very hard on these, those dates because it's just, it might be set as early as this week. I doubt it. They're, they're very rough. I did note that the Republican National Convention in 2024 is July 15th to 18th, and the Democratic National Convention is August 19th to 22nd. So I will not be available on the 21st of August, but that is a work session. And so that would be Commissioner Connolly would be chairing that. And so I just miss it. If I, I, there's slight chance, but pretty, pretty good chance it's not, I'm not going to have any availability. It's the second to last day of the convention. So that's just not, that's not going to be, that's going to probably be a tight day for me. I see Commissioner Brown with his hand up.
Actually don't have a question or, or even an opinion to share at this point, but I'm curious about the rest of you in the sense that this particular model was intended to be a pilot. First time we've done anything like this in terms of gathering commissioners to conduct business and to do our work. And so I think kind of almost putting the cart ahead of the horse, but I realize we don't have a lot of time. We have to act in July. But nonetheless, I'm just curious what people think about our experience so far with this, with this model. Having said, I wouldn't offer a personal opinion, I'll just do that anyway and say that I think this has worked out pretty well. Frankly, however, we really haven't, we don't have much of a history. So I'm just curious how the rest of you feel about this, this hybrid approach. This would give us five meetings in person and four virtual.
I see Commissioner Conley has her hand up. I don't know who is to address Commissioner Brown's question or if it was something else.
Well, I did have another comment, but I will say I've, I've actually, I like this, this meeting, the way we've done it. I think having the virtual sessions has been helpful. And I think it's worked pretty well. And I think we've had them spaced pretty well. And I guess I would just say I, I share the, the idea of moving the October one up a week because I do think we're, it's, we really want to see Field Spring, I think, when it, when we can get out and, and see it. And I would worry that as we get later in October that that might not be the case. And yeah, Yakima in April, I think, yeah, I think otherwise that works well.
Commissioner Bones, your hand was up next.
Yeah, no, I think this is, this is working pretty well. Probably need another, you know, this year, next year. We'll check back and see what we think or what you guys think because I'll probably be gone at the end of next year or not sooner. But the, my comment is more about something we talked a little bit about at the work session in December. And that is, maybe this is to Diana and Mike about our, the timing of our planning meeting in relationship to the preparation of the budget, capital budget and the operating budget and work plans. And I guess that's just a question that maybe this conversation at some point, we have an executive committee and then have a conversation with the commission. But, you know, if you're, you guys were stepping back and thinking, you know, when is the best time for the commission to sit down and talk about strategy for the next biennium, the budget and the capital budget? When is that? You know, what's the best time for that for the staff? And is this December or is that a different date? That's kind of my only. I think this is working well. I'm happy that I can be in Europe and participate even though it's late at night and get a little bit of taste of Sophia's world. So I think it's working well.
Thanks, Commissioner Bones. We have, you know, discussed it a little bit. And I think that there is some more discussion about that. It's also sort of looking at how we're lining up our executive leadership team strategic planning meetings and, and putting it all into, you know, a trajectory to get us to where we need to be. So I don't have a specific answer for you today. But it on, on, is December 10th and 11th the appropriate days? But I, I don't think it's far off the mark, actually. I, I think that we just got a bit about behind the eight ball. It's also about our executive leadership team work plans. And if, if, you know, what we're going to discuss at the planning meeting and how we're creating those work plans. Because we were missing some ELT members this fall. It was just a little clunky in that regard, but it's certainly something we need to take into consideration. So I appreciate the comment. Thank you.
I think I'm not quite sure. Commissioner Rod, your hand was next.
I, I like the setting, the way it is. And the, I want to echo what Ken is saying that I would rather the planning meeting be followed the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th. So know exactly what we've done, what we have done and what we have not done. And I don't know when I drag it till November. Let's talk about it because the funds should be committed. Contracts can be issued or not issued. And we know where we are in the capital project and other project. So why drag it till November? And I would rather see it in the, in the summertime of the planning meeting that we know what's going to happen next year because we are ready to finish the fiscal year. I like the setting it is and I'm, I'm flexible with the, with the dates. So that time I'm okay with it. That's it.
Hey, Commissioner Latimer?
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Brown's inquiry about the schedule. I think it's working pretty well. Being one of the two or three people that have a full-time job, I think the, the virtual meetings offer a lot of flexibility. So, and, and I think the spacing has been appropriate as well. So just wanted to give my two bits.
And I think we're back to you, Commissioner Brown.
I just, perhaps I'm not tracking exactly with what Commissioner Bones and the director are talking about in terms of alignment. But just a reminder, I actually like having the planning meetings in December. Just as a reminder for everyone, probably not necessary, although I know we do have some, some new executive members. You know, the, the two primary focus focuses of the annual meeting, planning meeting is the director's performance review and a deep dive into accomplishments by each of the programs, divisions within the agency. And then the annual wrestle tussle to come up with agreed to priorities for the coming year. And so that all seems to fit pretty well in my mind and historically with a December timeframe. But again, maybe there's a piece of this logistics or flow of good decision-making that I'm missing, but I just thought I'd offer that up.
Commissioner Bones?
Just a clarification to, for Commissioner Brown, the, the thinking had to do with the, the actual operation of the agency, which is not on a calendar year. It operates a biennium that begins July 1. And so the question that I was asking really was in relationship to that. So we do an annual review of what took place from January to December 31st. And in this, like this year, that covers half of the end of one biennium and half of the beginning of the other. And we don't even know what funding we're going to get for the, that half of the beginning of the other. So it's just a query for staff. And if it works well for staff, I don't have a particular problem with it. And if we're able to provide the input we need to provide, the timing that, that we need to provide it, then that's fine. I don't have a difficulty with December. It's just really more of a recognizing the reality that the agency operates on a biennium that, that begins in July and ends in, into June in two years. And we're doing our evaluations and assessments on a calendar year.
So with that clarification, I don't know if there's any other thoughts or comments from other commissioners. Commissioner Williams, you raised your hand.
I, I, I do actually would kind of like to know, is this a schedule that, you know, particularly with respect to, to the, the, the planning meeting, are we on the right sequence? And, you know, I'm, you know, would, I guess I want to echo what you said, Ken, is, you know, I really would want to know is that, does it work for, for staff, for the executive leadership team and Diana? Because it is off our budget year.
I'll go ahead and, and chime in, you know, my staff will laugh at me because I like symmetry. I like when everything's like aligned very well and makes sense. And, and it does, it is odd to, to have a planning meeting in, in December, when the actual end of our year is June. That being said, I, we haven't talked about this at a staff. I mean, it's also going into summertime, which is an extremely challenging time. But when we are making decisions or talking about things, when we're, we're, we're either only six months into something or we're six months away from something, it can be really challenging. So I think it's worth the conversation. I'll certainly talk with the executive leadership team about, you know, their thoughts. If we were to move the planning meeting into July, what that would actually mean from us from a really like tangible level. I also know that we start talking about the budget, then, you know, we'll start talking about the 25, 27 budget this November. And so our clocks are, there's just so many clocks going at once, but it makes sense to me to kind of get on that sort of biennial bandwagon, if you will, because it just make, that's how our businesses run. And when you're trying to put, fit the Gregorian calendar into this biennial calendar, it just, it, it, it leaves some large gaps, which, which can be a little challenging or just, you know, we just need to keep it in mind and be prescriptive about the conversation that we're having or the decisions that we're making because of that. So again, I don't, I, I don't want to speak for staff because we haven't really talked about this and what that impact may be in doing it in June, but I, my, you know, my, it, my symmetrical mind is like, yes, of course it has to be in June. But we'll, we'll come back to you and then it's something that we can definitely talk about in the executive, with the executive committee.
Commissioner Brown?
Just one thing that I would like the director and the executive team and my colleagues to think about. We had our budget, we have a two-year budget. Our budget's biennial. The fiscal year is just an accounting feature, but you might want to factor in that major policy, major priority, major decisions, if you're going to move the planning meeting, need to take that into consideration because in the supplemental year, we're dotting I's and crossing T's. I mean, it's pretty minor in terms of scope for the most part. But the big bite is in anticipation and in, in planning and in adopting and submitting the biennial operating and capital. So just something I'd ask for everybody to take into consideration as well.
Commissioner Rod?
I think one factor, I didn't mention it in the setting we are doing only virtual meeting versus in person is that I think the staff time, it's, it's a huge when we, when they come to every meeting we do. I think having a virtual that we are saving a lot of staff time, they can do some other work. Instead of having 15 people, 16 people all the way to Eastern Washington or anywhere, that's a lot of time we are saving for the agency having a virtual. I still, with all due respect to Commissioner Brown, I really disagree. I think we need to see the accountability after the end of the fiscal year, what has been achieved. So then we can see what needs to be done. I think this is accountability for the director and the executive team. We ask, we have the money. We want to see where we are with all these projects. That's my two cents word. Thank you.
Yeah. And I mean, I know that we've always, not always, but we, you know, we, we've had discussions about the timing of the meetings sort of in the spring, having, you know, these meetings. And right now, when we're having this virtual meeting in May, that's a bit closer. Specifically to sort of lead up to, and then always having this July meeting. And so I, I mean, again, I, I think, you know, we'd welcome lots of proposals at our, at our July meeting. And so I, I mean, again, I, I think, you know, we'd welcome lots of proposals at our, at our July meeting when we're, you know, if there are any. But I, I also think, you know, again, if our sort of Gregorian calendar is, seems like it's working for commission purposes, then we can move with that as well. You know, it's, there's different timing of different other, you know, things that we, we do outside of budgeting, although obviously that's, that's our other significant. That's the most significant activity we do, but you know, in terms of, I think we, we have our director review and we have our annual reviews. And we, you know, it's where we prepare for the legislative session as, if there generally is ones, or things like that. But again, we, I think we welcome a proposal from the staff of something seems like it's, it would work better for the rest of the team. So are there any other questions, thoughts, even if, I mean, if any staff, I'm assuming that no one, those staff have thoughts that they want to jump in with right now. We're gonna discuss it with the director first and then like, you know, but if anybody has any other thoughts they want to jump in on. So it sounds like the only proposed change was to move the October 16th, 17th meeting one week earlier to mid-October, to October, that would be 9th, 10th, I'm sure, 9th, 10th, I guess it would be. And no other changes proposed as of now? And if, if I do get, on the off chance they solidify some dates, these dates of these meetings have been sliding, Becky, that I'm at a lot, on the off chance that they get, you know, that they narrow down the dates for, for 2024 now. I don't think they're gonna do that until, I hope, in, in October this year. I, I had a hope that going was going to hire somebody who could take over these meetings, but they went in a different direction. So unfortunately, I'm stuck with them. But I will let you know via email if it looks to be a change. And then that way we can do any necessary coordination well before the July meeting. I think if I don't know by the end of, you know, if I don't know in the next couple of weeks, I'm not gonna know in July. So. Did you have any other questions for us, Becky, or?
Nope, I'm good to go.
Okay, fantastic. All right, so then we are on to commission director staff updates. Uh, I, I don't actually have a working meeting, so I'm gonna just say, are there any commission updates? Do commissioners have any updates?
Yes, I don't have an update, but I just want to make sure I know the ground rules. I don't want people to think I haven't been doing anything. It's my understanding, Chair Danenberg, that the executive committee was suggesting that we defer our litany of events and activities and today to the July meeting. And today just raise anything that we feel is sort of more, I guess you might say urgent or, or time sensitive. Is, is that the ground rules?
I'm not sure. I think it's informal ground rules, especially given the time for Ken and I right now. It's getting rather late for the two of us. And so I don't even know what time it is, but it's late. And so I think anything that, you know, I think, you know, we, I would appreciate anything that's more, you know, if it's requiring any sort of coordination or planning, you know, before our next meeting, things we need to know about or to ask about. So less of a retrospective and maybe more of a forward look from the commission.
So thank you. I don't have anything that can't wait until July and I'll have pictures. So thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
I, in, in our last meeting, we acknowledged that we would be heading to Westport for the EIS open house. Very quickly, I just want to say, I think it went very well. I think staff was great and, you know, I imagine we'll be hearing more as time moves on.
Okay. Director Dupree, do you want to leave any updates from you or from staff?
Um, yes, I, I just have a, a couple of quick things for myself. And I've just been trying to get out and about lately. I've gone to Fort Flagler to see the theater and, and look at the hospital and the environmental learning centers up there. I've spent a long period, all day long with Scott Griffith yesterday. So it was quite the day for a memorial for Tom Short and the Palooza Cascades Trail, as well as visiting a bunch of trailheads and issues along the Palooza Cascades Trail to just sort of visualize what staff has been working on and what they're, they're, they're gonna need to be working on. Also had the opportunity to go to Fort Simcoe and we had a tour of Nisqually. I was at the Westport meeting as well and spent some time with the boating program. I have some more tours lined up in the next couple of, a few weeks as well of just trying to get out while park, while the parks are busy and, and talk with staff. And it's, I'm learning a lot about some of the changes that, that people have faced during COVID. And, and then just looking at some of the capital projects that I see on paper, being able to see them in person has, has been really meaningful and being able to understand staff perspective as well. I have four staff updates that I'm going to call on some staff members here. The first up is Parks Development Director Heather Saunders.
Thank you, Diana. Thank you, Director. I, I, again, I'm with, I'm with Commissioner Danenberg. It's hard to keep it formal on these, on this environment. So I will try to keep it brief. I sense what it sounds like we're gonna be doing more formal updates in July. Just since you all asked about some of the staffing things, you know, this has been a real focus of mine since I came to the agency 13 months ago, and I'm putting an extraordinary amount of effort in recruitment and retention. So just to let you know that the deputy position that I mentioned before, that will have a, a real lead role in helping develop a, an overarching facilities program at state parks. We're doing interviews for that in two weeks or actually a week and a half, refilling Valerie's position. This is a really important position for the Nisqually effort, as well as that's our point of contact for the State Parks Foundation and other really critical strategic initiatives we have. So that's out on the streets now. We're continuing to try to get eastern regions staffed up. And I know our Brian Patno down there who manages that capital program is, is working really hard on that. And I appreciate his efforts and all the efforts of HR. So Amber, a big shout out to you for helping us move those things along. And as I mentioned, we're working on a staffing plan to sort of look at what resources and capacity we need to deliver this really large capital budget that we are so fortunate to get. I wanted to also just mention that we have a new capital project that's been completed. It's the Little Bridge. I think that's how I pronounce it, on the Willapa Hills Trail. And the ribbon cutting for that is going to happen the day before the Ride the Willapa event. So if anybody wants to go, that'll be at 3:00 PM on Friday. This is a new non-motorized pedestrian and bike crossing. People were having to cross SR6, which was a kind of a tenuous place to be crossing. So that, that has been completed and the final walkthrough is actually happening today. The most important thing that I wanted to share with you all is that you may recall, over the last few months, we've been talking about some of the permitting challenges we've been experiencing with Pierce County. It was something that the governor asked about when he came in January about Nisqually and if we were seeing any issues there. You may recall that we've been waiting over a year and a half for some of our permits at Nisqually and almost three years for permits for the day use improvements at Copachuck. So building off some of the recent success of our capital, our Southwest Capital team down there and Brian, you're out, who started trying to really build up his relationships with Pierce County. We elevated some of that dialogue and Mike and I both met with the Assistant Director of Planning and Public Works there and several other members of their leadership team. And a couple, a few really great things came out of that meeting. One, we agreed to have quarterly meetings to check in. We have some very important projects that are going on there. And so their leadership team agreed to have regular meetings with us. They decided to make Nisqually a director priority. That's sort of their highest level of priority for their own director. They committed to having our Phase Two and Phase Three building permits in hand, so that's everything. But the, all the things that Laura described, everything but the campground and the roundabout and the Village Center permits for that in hand by the end of the year. And to that end, one of the things that we were waiting on was to have our land use hearing scheduled. So that has happened. So we're making a lot of movement there. And then I just found out this week that after three years, we received all of our Copachuck permits. So it's just been a really great strategy and I appreciate all the work of the capital team. And just us taking that approach to elevate this with the leadership at Pierce County seems to have really helped us make some gains there. So I just wanted to let you all know that because it's great news. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like to call on our Communications Director, Claire DeLong.
Hello, everyone. I'm feeling a little jealous despite the hour of our commissioners over in Europe, but I'm here in the Riviera known as Tumwater, Washington, and it's lovely to be here with you all. So I have a, a really awesome team, I think, as you all know, and we cover a few areas. So I'll just give some brief updates, starting with communications. So communications, we've got our beach-friendly fourth campaign coming up. It's an annual campaign we do around safe practices for Fourth of July, and then we do help with beach cleanup. So some great work happened in there. We also are assisting, as usual, with lots of comms plans for projects and any sort of closures or any of those sort of things that are coming up in the parks. Good public information happening there. We're also getting a lot higher than normal media inquiries right now. So you may have seen some of those. But some of the big things that have happened recently is the Mount St. Helens anniversary kind of coinciding with the landslide. We got a lot of inquiries about that and park staff have been really great helping out, responding to those, including with King Five and some other outlets. And then we've been getting just a lot of really great press on how awesome our parks are. And it's really fun to respond to those media inquiries, but we are seeing a really high engagement with the media right now. So happy to see that and getting the word out about our parks. And our boating team also has been doing great work with safety and, and all of that ahead of the summer. So some really good press there. On the marketing, brand, web and creative team, we, as you all know, are doing a big website redesign project. We're gonna provide more of an update of, in the next commission meeting on how that's going, but it's a spoiler alert. It's going well. We're really proud of the work everybody's doing. It's a lot of work and it's gonna really result in some good outcomes. We've had some really good results from user testing in terms of just getting input from folks and really responding to the needs of our, our customers and staff who have been providing that feedback. Also been passing out new swag. As you can see, we've got our, our clothing and all of that. It's been quite the undertaking to get out to staff, but it's been a lot of fun. And we've provided about, to about 800 staff members so far, the new, new swag. We're getting it out to folks who continue to become parks employees. And it's just fun to see that getting out into the field. And on that note, we're also just sort of continuing to solidify our rebrand that we did last year and kind of continue to roll that out. And we're taking a really sort of practical, fiscally responsible approach, I think, which is as things become outdated, we put the new branding on it. We're not taking out things that are still useful. So you'll still see the old parks branding at times, of course, but that's because we're, we're trying to kind of, you know, recycle things until they really need to be replaced. So continuing that rollout, which is great. And then on the visitor services team, as you heard, Carrie is doing an awesome job at that group. They do both the information center, that's, she manages the information center and the central reservation system. So lots going on in both of those areas. Of course, ramping up for summer, we're seeing a lot more increased customer engagement. And then with this foster families work that's going on, really excited about that coming, coming down the pike and appreciate everyone's questions and feedback on that. And we're also distributing tablets to the parks, which is gonna help expedite the check-in process for campers. So that's just started and, and really excited about that. We're obviously always trying to find ways to, to make things a little easier for both our customers and our staff. And then as Carrie mentioned, we're looking, doing some preliminary work around discount pass programs, having conversations internally about how can we, how can we look kind of holistically at some of the discount passes and, and really figure out how to better meet the commission goals and priorities around that, looking at those. So really, I'm really excited about that work. I'm just kind of scraping the surface on that so far, but they're doing a really great. And they're just, I just really been appreciative of how thoughtful that team is around our discount pass programs. Can be complicated, but they're a really good resource for our customers. So that's it for me. Nice to see you all.
Thank you very much, Claire. I just, I would like to say, just briefly on the swag items. Every time I go to a park or go to a, a meeting where they're not in uniform and everything, every, not everybody, but most people are wearing their hoodies or their t-shirts or their vests. And we show up in meetings on teams and people have their vests on. And it's, I know that there was some consternation about changing the, the shield and the logo just because of the long history of our previous one, but it's really been embraced by staff. And I'd just like to give a big shout out to Stephanie McDermott, who has done a fantastic job of, of seeing all of this through and doing, just being a cheerleader for it. And people are just really enjoying it. And every time I go into a park, the first thing I hear is, how can I get one of those sweatshirts? And that's from the visitors, not from our staff. So I know that we have a plan for that after the website is taken care of and everything, but it's just really wonderful to see that.
You know, I was just gonna, I was actually just gonna add, like, we love our swag too, that we all just got in Spokane. It's been fun to wear it. I really, I think we have a fun picture of us lined up in our, while wearing our t-shirts and our vests and on our hike. And I, I was gonna wear, I, I just, I was back in Spokane speaking on a panel about conservation and I was gonna wear it, except that like it was 90 degrees. So now I have to, I have to wade through our order and get lighter wear. So I was like, grabbed my vest to bring. I took it and then I was like, oh, I'm gonna sweat to death in this North Spokane, whatever, central high school classroom if I wear it. But, um, still, it was, we really love it. And I actually, and also, by the way, I'll say it's this, I, I love this sort of, you know, replace as needed concept. It's, you know, fiscally and environmentally more friendly, but also gives people a little happy thing. I think we saw like a sign that had been stolen or something, or the shield had been stolen, I think, off of a sign at a park. And they're like, well, at least now we get, we're one of the first to get a new, a new logo. There's like a positive twist to like, you know, things being stolen or falling apart. It's very visible. So, you know, we all love it.
I love that. I love that that's the silver lining. That's really great. Yeah. It got stolen, but hey, at least we're gonna be one of the first for a new sign. That's fantastic.
Next, I would like to call on our Human Resources Director, Amber Ergel.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I want to provide a few updates today. And I know that some of you are in the late hour of your day, so I'll try to make this quick. We are currently creating a new employee orientation for new employees that we hire to better orient them to our agency. The goal is to help our new employees better understand the scope and mission of our agency, also inform them of agency key policies and processes, make sure they have the information they need related to payroll and benefits and their IT information. So hopefully we'll be able to enroll that new employee orientation here in the next month or two. I'm also working with our HR team to prioritize our HR-related policies that are out of date to identify which ones we should update first. Currently, we are updating our anti-discrimination and harassment policy, our reasonable accommodation policy and our ethics and employee conduct policy. We definitely have a list of more to update, but that is what we are currently working on. And I also have an update on our training. We have administered two Leading Others courses to supervisors and leaders throughout Washington State Parks. We've administered one Crucial Conversations training and we have another one coming up in a couple of weeks. And then we will pick up some more in the fall timeframe, so we can allow our supervisors to hone in on their busy summertime that they have launching just this last weekend, for sure. So that's the end of my updates. Please don't hesitate to let me know if you've got any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. And last, but certainly not least, our Policy and Governmental Affairs Director, Owen Rowe.
Thank you, Director Dupree. Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see you all, even if, even if it is virtually. Owen Rowe here, just to give you a couple of brief updates. A couple of weeks ago, I attended my only in-person bill signing for House Bill 1020, designating our new state dinosaur, the Sushasaurus Rex, right? The dinosaur, the only dinosaur bone ever found in Washington State was found on Susha Island Marine State Park. So Representative Morgan invited me, had an opportunity to meet with some of the students from the original fourth grade class. These kids are now middle schoolers now. This is, this experience has really affected a lot of, a lot of those students. And they were very proud of their accomplishments. It was wonderful to kind of mingle with them and some of their teachers and, and caregivers. And Governor Inslee- and caregivers. And Governor Inslee obviously was there. He signed the bill into law. And he was also very pleased that state parks remained engaged throughout the four-year saga that it took for Washington State to welcome its first state dinosaur. And as a follow-on, yesterday afternoon, Lisa Lance and I had the privilege and the honor of traveling to Parkland to meet with all of the fourth grade classes at Elmhurst Elementary. And we went there to discuss the Sushasaurus Rex, what fossils are, the development of the state dinosaur legislation, geologic time, anything else we could think of. Oh, what is a park? And why is it important to protect parks and so forth? Bunch of really bright kids that were super engaged. I think they were probably happy to listen to somebody else besides their teachers for a little while. I think Lisa and I quickly realized, remembered how challenging it is to be an elementary school teacher. So I think, you know, it was good to have our hour there. And it was quite, quite exhausting, but it was also very, very fulfilling. And it was a great experience. So really glad to have had that opportunity. And then next Monday, I think quite a few of you know that we'll be having our first Outdoor Recreation Caucus meeting of the interim. That's going to be up at Cornet Bay, at the Environmental Learning Center up there at Deception Pass State Park. Looks like there's going to be some pretty good turnout there. I think three out of four co-chairs will be there. I know Senator Muzzell was really happy that we were going to be up in his district. There'll be more opportunities. We'll be discussing another tour probably sometime in September, when school gets back in session. You know, I think we're probably, we're going to primarily just focus on touring the park, seeing some sites and being together, kind of wrapping up legislative session, talking about some of the successes, some of the not so successful things. Primarily, it was, I think we've got a good story to tell of state parks. We'll, we'll be having some conversations about some future planning for the Outdoor Recreation Caucus. We'll, we'll be visiting with one of our No Child Left Inside recipients with the Fidalgo Nature School. So really looking forward to that. We'll be taking a look at some WWRP investments at Deception Pass State Park, which there are many of, not surprising. WTA, or the Washington Trails Association, is going to be talking with us about some trail work at Cranberry Lake that they partnered with us on. And then DNR is going to be talking a little bit about the Trust Land Transfer Program, the legislation that they were able to pass this session, and the benefits for outdoor recreation. So that's next Monday. More to come on that. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen.
Commissioner Brown, do you have a question or comment?
Owen, I just want to make sure that when you have these legislators at the Cornet Bay Center, you be sure to point out to them the tree that is still standing on the shoreline that it is believed Captain Vancouver used in part to moor and anchor his ship on his exploration there. So please don't forget that extremely important piece of history that's right outside your door.
I had no idea. Thank you so much for the tip. I'll be sure to bring that up with Jason Armstrong. He's going to spend a little time with us, orienting us to the park. And I'm certain he can, he can talk a little bit more about that. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. That's a great tip.
Thank you, Commissioner Danenberg. That is it for staff reports today.
Okay, commissioners, any more, any final questions, comments? Make sure we didn't miss anything. Nope. Okay. If not, thank you, everybody, for being quick and efficient, especially from Ken and I. It is 11:35 PM for both of us. So we will be going to bed, but I hope the rest of you enjoy the rest of your day. And thank you to any, to anyone from the public who joined us for this meeting. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.